Which is good for those bullies, I mean, in the market. Adrick likes doing the bullying type. He's pretty savvy.
And ten, nine.
No, I'm kidding.
You're what?
Twenty seconds off.
Fifty seconds.
Yeah.
Because it's, I think, twenty seconds past. I'll be curious, maybe.
I mean, it seems like it's not exactly the same.
We'll see.
Did you get a new one? Did you lose your old one?
Um, I changed whatever backpack, briefcase thing he said. This was like, uh...
Yeah.
You know, try to keep all this stuff in one place.
I originally got two.
All right, it is 1:00 PM, time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Sir? Mr. Clark, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, today it is Commissioner Dick's turn to do the pledge of allegiance and the prayer. Do you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head. Dear God, as we gather today, we pause to express our heartfelt gratitude for the abundant blessings bestowed upon our city and its citizens. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, we give thanks for the harmony and prosperity that grace our community. We are thankful for the freedom to gather, to speak, and to lead. May this freedom continue to be a cornerstone of our city, fostering a spirit of unity and respect among all its inhabitants. We are grateful for the dedicated public staff who work tirelessly for the betterment of our citizens' city, blessed with wisdom, integrity, and compassion as all as they continue to serve our community. And as we approach the season of Thanksgiving, let us remember those less fortunate. May our actions reflect deep commitment to those hoping in need, building a community where everyone can thrive. Grant us the spirit of cooperation and understanding as we discuss and decide on matters today. May our discussions be fruitful and our decisions wise, always keeping the welfare of our city and its people at heart. Finally, we ask for your continued grace and protection. May our city flourish under your graces, and may we always have thankful hearts for your many blessings we enjoy. In your name we pray. Amen.
Next up is approval of the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections?
I did have a correction on my report. It lists S. instead of Ortiz. So just that correction there.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections? Okay, not the minutes stand approved as corrected. Next up on the agenda is public comment. This is a time for anybody in the audience to come up and talk about anything that is not on the agenda, and when you do come up, please state your name. Okay?
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for signs to be located in the city right away on Kansas Avenue from Campus Drive West to Second Street and on Mary Street, Escavel Park, for the Frosties Winter Wonderland fundraiser event from November 21st through the 26th, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is this an individual or is this an organization that we know of that took the request? Don't know? Okay.
I am unsure, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Report to one.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 as Match Day in Garden City.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Connie, is there anything that you would like to come up and say about Match Day? And then I'll read the proclamation afterwards, and then I know you want to get a picture, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, commissioners, for allowing us the opportunity to speak about Match Day. It is our seventh Match Day this year, hosted by the Western Kansas Community Foundation, and I have had the honor to present the proclamation seven times in a row now. You've welcomed the seventh one. For anybody who doesn't know about Match Day, it is a giving opportunity. Once a year, we offer this giving opportunity where donations to eligible nonprofits will be matched by a match pool offered through the community foundation, but generously provided by local sponsors. And this year, like last year, we have $100,000, $500,000 for 43 organizations that will participate this year. And yeah, last year we raised within match pool over $800,000. And of course, each year we hope that we will surpass that. But that is a scary comment, so we don't know what it will do. We are very blessed to live in a community where people this year show their generosity and their support of the local nonprofit. We have organizations ranging from family and social services, arts and culture, education, health initiatives. There is a wide range of organizations, so hopefully each community member will find something that he or she appreciates and wants to support, because all these organizations are depending on donations from individuals, families, and citizens to continue to provide resources and programs. So we hope people will come out again, and we already started the campaign last week on the 14th of November. So we have a Giving Day, Match Day Giving Portal online, so we receive donations there, and people, of course, stop by the office and bill in check. But the big event will be next Tuesday, on November 28th, that you just announced, which is Giving Tuesday, and that is nationally known as Giving Tuesday, the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And he will be hosting an in-person event in the Old Gordon's Building on Main Street, 409 North Main, where we will be there from 7:00 morning till 7:00 evening. If anybody wants to stop by and meet the local nonprofits, talk to them, and maybe also talk about opportunities to volunteer, offer help in any other way. It's not about monetary donations, although that's very nice, but it's also another way of giving back to the community through the organizations. So thank you again, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe in this is going to be a million-dollar year for this. Yeah, this will be your million-dollar year.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll come down and do a picture. So whereas Match Day was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Match Day is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Match Day is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Match Day and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Garden City, and whereas Match Day is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout the holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2023 as Match Day in the City of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Sign and seal this 21st day of November, 2023. So come on down, and we'll...
Item 7A, this is a presentation of the results of the City of Garden City's annual equipment and vehicle auction from Garden City Police Department. Any questions over the auction itself for the $48,408.75 that was received?
No.
All right, moving on, we'll discuss item B. This is a presentation by Assistant City Manager Ramos, who'll give an update on the capital improvement plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. In recent years, the city has worked to improve its five-year capital improvement planning process, aiming for alignment across departments and projects. The approval of the capital improvement plan administered a policy during the October 18th, 2023 meeting by the governing body is the latest example. This policy establishes criteria and guidelines for ongoing CIP development, accompanied by the formation of an internal CIP committee. Comprised of a cross-departmental team, this committee reviews projects against outlined criteria and provides recommendations to city management. In the second quarter of 2023, project proposals were solicited from departments, followed by rigorous review and modification by the internal CIP committee. This process ensured accuracy in budgets, considered site plan intricacies, and explored opportunities for project consolidation. Each project underwent evaluation based on the established capital project criteria outlined in the CIP policy. We are currently in the public outreach phase and have partnered with Zen City, a civic engagement and digital platform tailored for local governments. This collaboration is focused on efficiently collecting feedback on the city's capital improvement plan. Zen City will play a vital role in bolstering communication, collaboration, and community engagement by leveraging digital networks for targeted advertisements exclusively within our community. Our goal is to reach as many residents as possible. Additionally, the city is proactively promoting community participation by integrating QR codes with survey links into utility bills and the activity guide packets distributed by the Parks and Recreation Department to every household in the community this December. This strategic approach ensures residents can easily access and contribute their insights to the capital improvement plan, fostering stronger community engagement and involvement in the planning process. The information gathered from these surveys will support data-driven decision-making and improve overall communication with residents. Upon reflection and careful consideration, staff does recognize the need for greater community input in the earlier stages of the new capital improvement planning process. We acknowledge the current process focuses largely on staff input and direction. For future iterations, we are committed to refining the policy, prioritizing increased community involvement from the outset, and actively integrating the community's insights into the planning process. Our goal is to ensure that the community assumes a more integral role from the beginning, actively contributing their perspectives to the planning process for a more collaborative and inclusive approach to capital improvement projects undertaken by citizens, city elected officials, and professional staff. Like to answer any questions, we also have a member from Zen City on Zoom with us.
So we have no fiscal note on this because it's information, but what is the fiscal nature of this partnership?
So we're still waiting on community feedback, and it will all depend on that between the projects and the budgets, and then once we get that information gathered and go through the prioritization, then we'll be able to kind of outline the capital improvement plan and the budget that's going to take to get there.
I'm more looking at the Zen City part of it.
Okay. We spent, I believe, around $12,000, $14,000, if I can remember it off the top of my head, on this partnership.
This specific one for CIP? Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, so, yeah, I'd love to hear from the representative also, but this idea of especially since he spent the time to be here, and I really appreciate that, because I think that makes a big difference when we really understand. So I know that, like you said, I thought that was an interesting note, we talked about it being more staff-driven, and then we want it to be also more community, a lot more community input. So can you explain how that the Zen City, how does that increase the community input? And then is it weighted, or is it, and how is it going to be used and integrated in that CIP process?
Right, so they use their digital platform to use geolocation data to specifically target our community. And so they use social media sites, websites, and any mobile app that people in our community are using to use their ad for the survey. So I don't doubt this, do you kind of want to elaborate on some of the tools that you guys are using, and then how you kind of break down those demographics to ensure that we're hearing from every sector of our community?
Yeah, thank you, and it's a really pleasure to be here and talk through this with you all as well, and hopefully I can answer every question you have. Specifically, we utilize targeted-based ads, so anywhere that you would see an ad on a website, mobile, social media, next door, et cetera, we're able to put a prompt for them to complete the survey. We do those targeted ads, and that's based on the 2020 census data to make sure that we get a representative sample within each demographic group that is identified by the census, and then we do wait those results to answer the latter part of your question, to make sure that it reflects the population of Garden City.
Yeah, so one thing I'm concerned about, and I didn't realize this until recently, I was helping a neighbor who does not have an email, and also her phone is not a smartphone, and so a lot of there's, so there is still a generation that exists that doesn't have really access to the internet, or doesn't really use those kind of things. So you talked about demographic, but what about age groups? I guess especially we have some older residents in our community, how are we going to make sure we include them and make sure we include the things that they see as valuable and keeping them here in our community?
Yeah, we work with over 300-plus communities in the United States, in the U.K., and we regularly audit our methodology to make sure that we are reaching and meeting the promise of getting that representative sample within each of those demographic groups, specifically age. And we generally get an over-response, actually, from the 65 and older representation level. Usually you're looking for around 12%. For example, 12% of the population is over the age of 65. We are consistently getting 11% to 13% of that sample size. But also, we worked with city staff to make sure that whenever we are building out, we provide an opt-in and a QR code ability and ability for residents to take the survey outside of that. That won't be included, obviously, due to the methodology of making sure that we get that representative sample, but that data will be included in the final report to both staff and their ability to understand and leverage that input as well, so that it is a data point that they're aware of.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And we're also putting those QR codes in our utility bills and the activity guide packets by the rep, and we even talked about maybe printing out the survey, and then they can fill out and then mail to us for those who don't have smartphones that can pull up the QR codes.
Yeah.
Would it be possible that when we get the results of these to get the raw as well as the weighted results, so we can see what was done then? Ideally, also the methodology, not just "we weighted it," but what does "we weighted it" mean specifically to our community? That way we're just confident when we're interpreting those results and conveying those results to our citizens, we can say, I mean, addressing, like Commissioner Henri said, no, we were able to hit this group and all that stuff. So would that kind of results be possible to get out?
We generally do not provide the raw results, and the reason behind that is we want to make sure that we protect the anonymity of those that are responding and the trust within the data base on that anonymity of those that are responding to the, those who are responding to the survey as part of that survey methodology. However, we are, we do have a PhD in data science that oversees our full methodology and makes sure that we follow the market standards whenever it comes to that ranking, that weighting and ranking. And so what we can do is we can offer both the weighted results that protect the anonymity of the respondents to city staff, but we also can make availability, Dr. Levinstein, to come and talk through the methodology in depth with you all, as well as part of the final presentation of the results.
I'd like that. Thank you.
So are these the questions, or it just says sample, so will you be getting other questions, too?
No, that is the question. Sorry. This is kind of for your, you know, so to do, if you want to make any changes.
Okay, so if we want to make changes, or we just get with you about what we, okay.
So through this whole thing, kind of a timeline, can you give us kind of a walkthrough of, so we do the survey, when? Are we going to have, I know we've had a group discussion where we've had community members, can you kind of step us through that timeline and right quick?
So the process for this year will be, after four or five days after today's meeting, we'll get that going, that should go live, and we'll probably leave until January, and we'd like to run it through the advisory boards, the results, and then let the advisory boards kind of go through some of this data and some of the prioritization of these projects, so we can get their input. And then we'll build out the capital improvement plan to the city manager in February, which will be presented to you guys at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a goal from our city staff perspective of how many results we'd like to get back in?
Yeah, we would like at least 600 to be the goal, from the survey.
That is a good goal.
And so, I'm sorry, you said this data will be available at our planning, at the annual peeling, planning next year? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas, thanks for joining us.
Thank you all.
Remaining items under managers' report or staff reports, you have any questions on I guess there is a lineup change from Cox pursuant to their franchise agreement with the city as well, in that section. Hearing no questions, I'll draw your attention to meetings of note. Many of those require RSVPs. If you'd please do those through C. Leonard Cory. Be appreciated. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance approved. It would be appropriation ordinance number 2591-2023A.
That we approve appropriation ordinance number 2591-2023A?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance to reflect previous governing body action for zoo vehicle fees. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2969-2023. Chris, please.
Derek, as much talk. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. During a recent review of the Code of Ordinances, it was discovered that the current one on the books does not match with the practices that were part in place for the zoo vehicle fees. So before you, we have a new ordinance which does match those practices. In 2010, the change was a rate change, and then in 2013, it was decided to expand those charges to year-round. In 2014, we brought back some designated times for free access for all, and then in 2021, it was free vehicle admission for veterans during the weekend closest to Veterans Day. So those changes are why we include the new ordinance that is before you. And we would recommend you approve this. There is no fiscal impact.
The only thing I was going to ask, I know that, I was curious about how many vehicles I was going to email you before I gave the chance, how many vehicles actually, because I know these roads are mainly less about vehicles and more about, you know, just ease of going through the, using it for the zoo staff. Do you know how many vehicles a year go through the zoo, or just a ballpark?
I don't have that number.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going to ask. And the other question, I thought it was, I really liked the ordinance, number two I thought was interesting. I don't know how you keep track of it being the first, is it the first Wednesday of the month? And then in November, then it's any Wednesday, you know, so I didn't know if that could be simplified, and if it didn't make that much difference if it was just any Wednesday, that might be a gift to our, especially to our community for something where Wednesdays are at no charge, so.
It actually coincides with the hour changes that the zoo does? Our extended hours during summer are the ones that have the one day a month, and then during the regular hours or winter hours, that's when it's every Wednesday.
Any other discussion?
No, by move that we approve the new ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments to Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to residential sprinkler systems in the International Residential Code. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2970-2023.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, myself and I've got Gene Proberses with the Fire Department, our Fire Marshal here. Give you a little background to this. During a site plan review, it was discovered that we had some conflicting code language that existed regarding sprinkler systems requirements for certain types of townhomes. Neighborhood and development staff met with Fire Department staff to discuss amending the International Residential Code to remove the fire sprinkler requirement for townhomes to eliminate the discrepancy. With the different types of housing we are now seeing and promoting, this has been looked at as a barrier to building townhomes. Staff agreed to recommend amending the code and removing the requirement for the sprinkler systems in townhomes and present this to building safety board of bills for their consideration. The Building Safety Board of Bills met on October 10th, 2023, and discussed amending the requirements for the fire sprinkler systems in townhomes. Kansas State Statute 12-16, comma, 219 removes the sprinkler requirements for one and two family dwellings, but did not address townhomes built to the standards of the International Residential Code. The Building Safety Board of Bills approved, five to zero, to remove the requirement to sprinkler townhomes and requires stenciling for separation walls with language firewall protect all openings. There's more language to that, I summarized it in your packet, you've got the full draft and a body of that. The alternative today, the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented, amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to the residential sprinkler system in the International Residential Code. Alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the ordinance as presented, amending Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to residential sprinkler systems in the Residential Code. And number three, the governing body may provide alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance as presented, amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to residential sprinkler systems in the International Residential Code. You have any questions? Your best answer.
I had a question on the certain types of townhomes. What, explain the difference between the certain types of townhomes.
So in state statutes, it just spoke to one and two family dwellings. The International Residential Code brings in townhomes. Townhomes is when you have a zero lot line boundary, similar to duplex, but duplex there is no property line separating. So specifically speaking to a property line dividing into two and a half, we had language about how to build these walls, we had language that they need to be sprinkled, and language within how to build these walls, it said, here's the wall with or without sprinkler system. And because it gave the without option, we had some design experts saying, this is saying there's an option without the sprinkler system, so we wanted to clean up that portion.
I think I read through the entire ordinance and codes and stuff, so, I mean, it makes sense, it's kind of a gray area that we want to take out and make it sound simpler or so.
And to elaborate a little bit, with great coordination with the Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, the stenciling was part of what the commercial code requires, and it's appropriate, that's part of eliminating the spread of fire, so we wanted to make sure that that was included.
So a question for the Fire Marshal on the different types of fire sprinklers, there are differences between a commercial and a residential, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So the pressures for a commercial system, you're looking at sprinklers, I'll just give you an example, Walmart, Walmart uses a higher density head, so the gallons coming out of that head may be 45, 50 gallons a minute because they're trying to cover a large area. Residential fire sprinklers are only put out seven gallons a minute, so they're basically life-safety only, enough time for people to get out of the house, and they will actually qualify prior to arrival, but they use less water.
And then so the residential townhome sprinkler systems are designed to not set off the neighboring system at the same time, so in case it did start a fire in one, it's not going off in the other one?
Correct, yeah, only one head goes off, and it just, it doesn't affect the other three units.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve ordinance number 2970-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Items C through I are all nuisance resolutions. We'll go through the entire item on C, and then if there is anybody here on one of these items, merit be appropriate to ask them to identify themselves, and we can go to their specific item, otherwise we'll progress through the resolutions, giving the resolution number and the address. So the process, regardless if it's a tree, a motor vehicle nuisance, or an environmental nuisance, is effectively all the same. Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 3076-2023, and abate a motor vehicle nuisance condition at 1604 Neal Street. Trent? Trent.
Okay, so this property 1604 Neal Street was found in violation of the motor vehicle nuisance of the Code of City's Environmental Code. We sent out two notices, the first one on October 5th, 2023, the second one on October 24th. We were unable to get any communication from the property owner. The property still sits as originally found. Alternatives before you today, the governing body may approve the attached resolution which will allow staff to abate the issue. And alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. The fiscal note, if any cost occurred, will be assessed to that property.
I move to approve resolution number 3076-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is there anyone here for items D through I? Any of these nuisance? Doesn't appear so. Item D, this is, if approved, would be resolution 3077-2023, abating nuisance conditions at 2316 D Avenue.
I approve resolution, or make a motion to approve resolution number 3077-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Motion carries.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution 3078-2023, abating conditions at 2928 Belmont Place.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 3078-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a tree nuisance resolution. And if approved, this would be resolution number 3079-2023 and abate conditions at 1213 Old Manor.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 3079-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, abating conditions at 2928 Belmont Place. If approved, it would be resolution number 3080-2023.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 3080-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 3081-2023 and abate conditions at 1115 Pearl Street.
Make a motion, approve resolution number 3081-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, which if approved would abate conditions at 411 Evans Street. If approved, it's resolution number 3082-2023.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 3082-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and identify next steps as it relates to the use of the state theater. Daniel.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On February 7th of this year, the city commission authorized the release of a request for proposal for the future use of the state theater. Proposals were received on April 26th of this year and we received three proposals. The commission heard presentations from all three applicants on May 16th. And after the presentations, the city commission had a desire to wait to take further action until a couple items had occurred. One was the hiring of our Parks and Recreation Director, which has since happened and that happened in July of this year. The second one was a presentation from the Finney County Community Facilities and Needs Assessment that was done by Hundon and you all had a presentation from them in August of this year. And in addition to that, also requested that staff met with each of the applicants, which happened the few weeks following the meeting, to really talk about some of those financial components and elements in a lot more detail. As a result of those meetings, we did receive some additional information particularly related to Mr. Pamplin's proposal. That's been included in the agenda for you all to consider today, along with those original proposals as submitted, so that you have all of that kind of in one place for reference. It was clear coming out of those presentations and the discussion from the governing body that everyone really agreed that there was a strong desire to get something moving forward in the state theater. The scope of those ideas and kind of what that looked like depended on the proposal that was submitted. All three proposals included a pretty significant ask from the city to help with the upfront costs to remodel the facility and/or some level of ongoing financial support. And no funding was identified in either the 2023 budget or the 2024 budget for this specific project. As this process has gone on, it has been a lengthy process. There has been some additional interest expressed in that building. However, to date, because we've been in the middle of this formal process, staff have asked those parties to really hold off until the city commission has made a determination on those proposals that have been submitted. So as a result of that, staff would recommend that all three proposals are rejected, therefore closing out the RFP process formally. However, this will still allow staff to continue to work with the three applicants as they continue to work through identifying private funding mechanisms, but also allow us to engage in some of those other conversations with interested parties that may have some ideas that are mostly or completely privately funded. So it really just gives us that flexibility. It also allows us the ability to prepare a public funding strategy for your consideration as we go into the 2025 budget discussions, should any of those other alternatives that we would go down and pursue not be viable kind of in that timeframe. So with that, we have three alternatives before you. One would be to formally reject the proposals, which gives us the flexibility to continue to work with the three applicants as desired, as well as entertain some of those other folks that have expressed some interest and also develop those funding strategies for 2025, should none of those be a viable option going forward. Alternative two is to select one of the three applications that have come before you and we'll go down their different next steps related to each of those proposals, but we could go down that path as well, or you all could provide some sort of alternative direction. Staff recommends, based on the absence of private or public funding for the three proposals submitted related to the RFP, that the governing body, like I said, reject those proposals, but direct staff to continue to work with interested parties to find a future use of the state theater while also developing funding strategies for a publicly funded renovation. No fiscal note inherent with the direction today, although depending on what direction you choose, there will likely be a fiscal impact going forward. We do have two of the applicants here. I think the other is on their way, hoping to make it for this, but I would be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure they would be happy to answer any questions you have for them as well.
So I know the arts program at the Recreation Commission has been on hold, you know, we have a new director, but I'm curious about the amount. So are we still dedicated to the arts through the recreation? Because I know it's been more, we've been more of a sports focus. And really, I was looking at the survey earlier and I didn't realize that was all the questions, but they really only talk about sports or sports fields and really, this is kind of a whole area that we've left out, that we're not even addressing. So if we as a city commission don't want to be in that area or we don't work recreation, to continue to go down that area, I think we need to be really upfront and honest with them. So with that, so that's one of the questions, how dedicated are they to? Do we still have a budget for the arts programs? And, you know, in the past, the recreation had some dollars, they were able to do their own renovation. I mean, I have several buildings that they purchased and then, or given to them and then, so, you know, there was that opportunity. I think the state theater was given to them at one point.
Yep.
So I'm curious about, so what, because we talked about public funding, we have some or do we not? And if we don't, that's fine. But I'm curious about the commitment to the arts, because I think this is really important to know now, rather than having these, these people who have already submitted all this work on these proposals, if we're not committed to doing that as a city commission, then I don't think that's really fair to have them continue to work to go forward, so.
So my reference to the no dedicated funding was specifically for the state theater in either of these two budgets. I don't know if Tisha wants to come up and speak a little bit to kind of some of those prioritization questions. I don't want to step on her toes.
We just shifted some of our employee responsibilities and so we are looking to hire an additional recreation coordinator, the add is out currently, who would be responsible for arts and enrichment. So there is a desire to build that program back, certainly. As much as the community wants to be involved with that, we'll look at lots of avenues and see where the community leads us and try different things, but there is definitely a desire to do that.
Yeah, I was concerned because like I said, when I saw the survey and then we don't really ever talk about the arts, we talk about sports.
Right.
And I think that's, it's so valuable and the sports complexes we have, I mean, are not second to them, but they are really well done and they're really well kept. But I just want to make sure that before we go forward and we're, you know, promising, hey, we're going to work on this or this is something in the future, that we're, we actually are wanting to do that and that's something that's still, that you see is valuable. And if you don't, I understand. But if you do, and obviously you do since you're, you know, putting out a request or to hire someone to fulfill that, so I really appreciate that information.
I do think that arts is something that you can do your entire life.
Yep.
Sports is usually something you're limited to when you're younger. You have to change your sports when you get a little bit older. And so I think it's, I think it's important that we offer things that people can do their whole life and we offer things that people are interested in. Not everybody's interested in sports. So I think that by diversifying what we can do, we suit our community a lot better.
No, I appreciate that input. I really do. Thank you.
One of the questions that I had asked Derek about with the CIP was, you know, about changing things or adding things and the state theater is one of the things that I thought about adding to that CIP process to see just what the community input is regarding their yea or nay as far as wanting to have public dollars be spent on that facility.
Yeah, we can add a question into that survey about the direction the community wants to go with that state theater.
Well, I know there are arts programs, you know, during school, I mean, I love that, that there are arts programs for, you know, generally, you know, school age kids, but, you know, as far as for adults or other things, there really are not that many places, you know, in town that you can actually do. And in the past, I mean, there was a really a vibrant and very, you know, robust program through the arts and past directors. And so, I mean, I'm hoping that can be revitalized, again, understanding that we have limited dollars and then, you know, we don't want to go outside the scope of what we can afford, so.
Right. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Any other questions?
Mayor, I make a motion that we reject all proposals for the state theater and direct staff to continue to work with interested parties to find a future use of the state theater.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a sanitary sewer backup prevention program. Fred.
Mike.
Mike.
Fred's in Wichita, so I'm standing in for him today. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, there have been three separate private sanitary sewer backup events that have impacted properties connected to the city's sanitary sewer system. The most recent event occurred on July 20th, 21st of 2023. The backup events in all three instances have impacted customers in the following subdivisions, the Wilson Edition, the Amy Street Townhomes and Campus Garden South. On September 5th, 2023, the governing body directed staff to provide a proposal with strategies, costs and impacts for improvements to the impacted area and develop a backup prevention program. The initial outline of the backup prevention program was presented to the governing body on October 3rd, 2023, and then it was presented to the Public Utilities Advisory Board on November 2nd of 2023. The unofficial minutes of the Public Works Utility Advisory Board are attached. The estimated costs for this backup prevention program are outlined in the table below. The table below provides information regarding funding alternatives for the program and the program's expansion in the affected areas beyond the 44 properties, so should more than 44 properties like to participate. And then the installation of these backwater valves are estimated between $3,600 and $4,200 per resident. And then the chart below shows you the difference in the cost, whether it was $3,600 or $4,200. Attached to this memo is the B U P P program guide outlining the program's implementation process. Staff proposes sending this process, this program guide to properties impacted by previous sanitary sewer backups in these additions that was listed earlier, should the city commission approve this program. So the alternatives would be that, alternative one is that the governing body may authorize the implementation of this backup prevention program with a 100% reimbursement of backwater valve installation or repair to participating eligible customers. Alternative number two would be the same thing, except it'd be a 75% reimbursement to the residents. Number three would be the same thing, except it's a 50% reimbursement. Or number four is that the governing body could direct staff to provide alternative recommendation on this backup prevention program. The Public Works Advisory Committee recommended alternative number two, and that would be authorizing the implementation of the backup prevention program with a 75% reimbursement of the backwater valve installation or repair to the participating eligible customers. The cost for this backup prevention program would come out of the wastewater sewer maintenance budget. The costs were not included in the original 2024 budget, but if approved today, will be improved in the revised 2024 budget. The cost will be covered by the budgeted cash forward in the water wastewater fund, which right now is budgeted at roughly $6.3 million at the end of 2024. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. There's a map attached to this memo that shows the areas that were impacted by this latest backup. Also is a copy of the program prevention application that would be, needed to be completed and submitted to utilities staff and if approved or modified, if you choose to have us modify something like that. And then if it is approved today, we would start a campaign, we would notify all the citizens, we would work with our communications department and get this information out and make it available to those whoever would want it. And we would specifically mail all of those particular homes that were impacted with this last event. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So Mike, what process, when you have a resident come and they want to do this, what is their expected cost upfront? Do they, do they have to pay for the whole entire thing and then submit their receipt to the city for that rebate or is it kind of negotiated through the process?
We could do it either way. They could either pay upfront 100% and then they have to show us the receipts from the qualified contractor that put it in and we could reimburse them, or they provide us with the prices that they got from the qualified contractors. We would agree to pay them after the installation was completed. So I would imagine the homeowners won't have to pay their, if it's 75%, they'd have to pay their 25% up at that time.
Correct, okay. So I did receive a couple of phone calls this morning, you know, on my way and I wasn't able to talk very long to either, but I mean, they were concerned, they didn't really know about the program and so, and so they were just reading online and they had some opinions. And I'm curious, I mean, maybe if this is not something we have to do today, could we get some other input before we make the decision? And I'm not saying everyone's going to say 100% or the 75%, but I'm curious about, especially those, I was thinking about those who have already paid out, I mean, a lot of dollars, you know, to like to repair their basements and sometimes twice. I'm curious about if we might want to get some input before we decide, you know, what's really affordable? I mean, I know we're going to do it afterwards, but then the decision has already been made. And so I appreciate the mayor's leadership on this and the fact that we want to do something but in the interest of including more community input, especially because this is a very expensive loss when you have a water loss like this. So I'm wondering if we could get some input from those residents and if they choose not to have any input, then that's great and then we can make that decision based upon funding and funding availability. But I'm curious if that might be a step we do before we make a decision and then, because it sounds like the notifications afterwards, after we make the decision, so.
By all means, you know, the commission, you can direct us to get more information. That's why we put that alternative forward, is direct us to come up with a different alternative and present it later on.
What sort of input are you looking at? Like what percent reimbursement we're talking about?
Well, what they could afford, right, exactly. I mean, what they could afford. I mean, this person said, of course, they didn't want to do the lowest, the 50%, but you know, the 75% they thought they could afford, but again, they just got done paying for, you know, redoing all the other things. And their insurance is getting canceled because they've had two major water losses, which I understand, you know. they've had two major water losses, which I understand, you know. But I'm saying, to me, I mean, we're making an input. This has never happened to my home. And so for me, I mean, it doesn't seem, you know, it's not as impactful. But I do know this was a huge impact on those residents. And there's a lot of residents who are impacted. I was surprised when the map, thank you for the map, was, I was really surprised how many people had the potential to be impacted but weren't. And then so again, having this just be available is really a good option, so.
So when you break down, break down the numbers, it's about $3,900 for residents. So that would be either 100% rebate on, from the city or 75%. So that you can kind of break down those dollars for around a number-ish.
Yeah. And I think that the residents would like us to do something. And I think that this is that something. I think that this, especially, you know, as time goes on, I think it would be important that we take some action and offer some sort of a program for them. I mean, I agree with the advisory commission about, or committee about 75%. And so to me, that's a good equitable solution. And I think it shows that, you know, we really are willing to step up and help them.
Would it be possible to get a record of yeses and noes to taking up this program? Are we concertedly, if they don't do this program, that house is signing somewhere saying, I'm turning this down? Not necessarily for now, but for when that house sells in 15 years and they don't have a history of what happened. And then if something comes up and you say, well, we have record that the homeowner at that time didn't take advantage of this program. Just for tracking, is that, do you feel like that's too much work or?
I think if I could, Commissioner, I think we would certainly notify the 44 that have been impacted and let them know of the program. And either we can come up with something where, something either sign off and say, yes, they want to be part of that program or no, they do not. So there would be a record. And then also with that, they have to provide us the maintenance records every year as the time goes on or however it's recommended. If it's over two years to have that device maintained, so that we would know, at least the city would know that it's in working order. Certainly do that.
I just don't want to get into a position where we're in the future and people are saying, well, I didn't know that this was an option.
Well, the disclosure, if there's no disclosure when you're buying the home or selling the home, there's no disclosure for the new homeowner, so.
Right. Well, and just if somebody does not take advantage of this program, and then something happens later on, and then that way we can at least go back and say, no, you had to specifically opt out of this program.
And it would be open, the program would be open to everybody in the community if they choose to do that.
Right.
Which is the part I like.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, that's the part I like.
I guess I was, I thought we were just targeting.
No.
If you live up on the hill.
That's where that higher number comes in.
Right.
Yeah.
No, that makes sense.
Yes. That's why I think it's equitable, because it applies to anybody.
Okay, I thought, yeah.
Then yeah, the targeting of the previously affected makes sense in that case. Yep. We don't need to do that for everybody in this town. That would be definitely headache.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
I guess if we could, if we could provide those 40 residents, I mean, with 100% payback and then open it up for the rest at the 75%, I would be happy with that.
That's an idea.
I mean, just because they've lived through the experience a number of times, it is our system. It did back up. I mean, they, it wasn't their fault that the system pushed, wasted into their basement. But if we're opening it up to the entire community, I would be all in favor of at the 75% mark. It's just, I would like to see us provide 100% reimbursement to those residents that were affected in that 44-plus housing unit area.
I like that idea. I think that's a good idea.
And those numbers are included in the chart. They're the 100% reimbursement for that 44 would be somewhere between that $158,000 and $184,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, so.
So Mike, what is the lifespan? Is this, I'm sure this is not a one and done, but is there a lifespan on these backup, on these backup?
Oh, I think as long as they're maintained, I think it's a 30-year, you know, like anything else you have in your house, eventually it's probably going to, going to need to do something to it. But if you don't maintain it, then, you know, if you don't maintain it, then it won't operate the way it's supposed to. Won't keep water from coming back into the house.
And current houses have these installed by code, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, once you get the maintenance, I mean, it's a standard homeownership maintenance issue.
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Sessin, is the ones who are directly affected, the 100%, you know, understanding and then again, offering, and again, but again, it's, I like that it's volunteer, they don't have to do that. But then, you know, the other, for the whole community, at the 75% level, so.
I do like the, where it's a follow-up on how they're maintaining it, so then it's not, I mean, we understand that it's getting maintained or not maintained, depending on what the status of that device is. So I like that input. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the, and authorize the implementation of the BUPP with 100% reimbursement of the backwater valve installation or repair in participating eligible customers. The 44 customers. Okay. Thank you.
And then do you want to add?
And then, with 75% reimbursement of the backwater valve installation or repair to participating eligible customers that are outside of the 44 eligible individuals, homeowners.
Second.
Did you get that, Derek?
That's a lot.
Commissioner, is there any other discussion?
I might have to go back and re-watch that a couple of times.
Yeah, right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Also, as a follow-up to the direction that we are still working on, the other events that we've talked about, putting things in the manhole covers that will prevent some of the infiltration, looking at an extraneous ditch or pit that we would build that would take this overflow. So none of that's, hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be able to report more information on that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the selection of an electric service provider for the recently annexed property in ordinance number 2963-2023.
Are you going to present that, Jennifer, if you'd like me to?
It doesn't matter. It's up to you. It's okay. Good afternoon, everybody. So what is before you is the selection of your retail electric supplier. And typically the way that this works, and I'm sure as you've gone through this most recently, there's more than one electric service provider in front of you presenting. And at the previous meeting, there's typically the one where you heard all the information presented from Mike on the factors. During that meeting, that's when Wheatland Electric usually also is present or whoever the other provider is. In this particular case, you only heard one side. And so this memo is a lot briefer than what you would normally receive, but it does still go through each of the factors that you heard on, the consideration of those. And of course, you do still have the option to not choose. Garden City is the electric provider for this space. You're not obligated just because they were the only one who presented to you. So you do have those options in front of you. But just to recap a little bit, the annexation on this property was effective on September 12th. And then we notified Wheatland Electric that this, that this was going to come before the governing body and of course gave them the option. And on October 6th, we received confirmation from them. They did not intend to participate or provide a request to be the electric service provider. The first time that actually came before you as the governing body was on November 7th, if you remember that. And Mike gave his presentation at that time. So this is the next and final step in, in making a determination about how we proceed with this annexation of this property and what happens with the providing of electric service. So there is no recommendation from staff here, but your options are, one, as after you have considered all of the factors in place, you can decide to designate the city electric department as the electric service provider. Or if you consider all the factors, you can of course determine that you would like to look for another retail provider for that electric service. If you do select city of Garden City, there's a fiscal note because obviously if at some point that becomes developed land and there are actual users, that will increase, there will be a cost on the front side and a revenue source on the backside. If you obviously choose not, then that fiscal note goes away. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, so because they've chosen not to be, to actually want to be part of that, so there would be nothing paid out to anyone, if we choose Garden City, then there would be nothing paid out to anyone else for that. Is that correct?
There are some fees that are still part of the, there's a franchise fee that is part of it that we still have to pay. It has nothing to do with this. This is solely you choosing who you are picking as the electric service provider. And that's all you're doing in this particular instance.
And then, and on these, there's a specific motion that we do have to make on this, correct? Or no? I mean, just make the motion?
Correct.
I keep forgetting.
Yes, on says.
Yep, just as it says. Yes, thank you.
Just making sure.
I'll make the motion, considering the factors, the governing body can decide to designate the city electric department as a retail electric provider for the annexed property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a notice of acceptance for the infrastructure of Pheasant Valley 3rd Edition.
All right. Mayor, Commissioners, for your consideration, we have done our final walkthrough for Pheasant Valley 3rd Edition. They completed their infrastructure on November 8th of 2023. Staff did that walkthrough. The infrastructure was inspected. It was compliant with the, in accordance with the requirements of the city and the development agreement. Section 70-2, 710301, preface is one, maintenance improvements require the subdivider slash developer to maintain or require public improvement in the subdivision until the improvements are accepted by the governing body. The subdivider developer is required to maintain the infrastructure for a period of one year before the city of Garden City takes over the maintenance of the infrastructure. The notice of acceptance is for the guarding, is, where am I? My bad. The notice of acceptance is for the city to acknowledge the completion of the infrastructure. This will start the one-year period for maintenance before the city takes over maintenance of the infrastructure. Your alternatives today, number one, the governing body may approve the notice of acceptance. And number two, the governing body may not approve the notice of acceptance. The recommendation from staff is to approve the notice of acceptance.
I move that we approve the notice of acceptance.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and authorize staff to submit three applications and two separate grant opportunities. One grant submission is with the bipartisan infrastructure law, renting outages and enhancing the resilience of the electric grid. The second grant submission is with Build Kansas Matching Grant Fund. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon again. I'll kind of go through, there's two different grants, so I'll just go through that, both of those real quick. Grant number one, the Kansas Corporation Commission is the state of Kansas coordinator and facilitator of the Department of Energy in response to this section number 40101D of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. The KCC is accepting applications from eligible entities and in which the city of Garden City is eligible to apply and, and to improve the reliability and resilience of the city's electric grid against disruptive events. As defined by the program, a disruptive event is an event in which operations of the electric grid are disrupted, preventively shut off, or cannot operate safely due to extreme weather, wildfire, or natural disaster. The primary goals of the program are to demonstrate measurable improvements in energy resilience with a focus on necessary and supporting grid modernization, investments in rural underserved and disadvantaged communities. This, the grant number two, is the Build Kansas Matching Grant Fund. This will provide matching dollars to the eligible entities planning infrastructure projects in Kansas that have been approved by the bipartisan infrastructure law grant. So if you received grant number one, this would do the matching that you needed for that particular grant. The intent of the Build Kansas Fund is to accelerate local infrastructure investment, excuse me, to support transformative community projects in areas of demonstrated geographic need. The Build Kansas Fund can provide up to $200 million in matching funds over the fund's life, fiscal year 2024 through 2027. And the Build Kansas Fund must be used for grants with the match requirement under that build infrastructure, the first grant. It's important to note that grant number one, the federal BIL grant application must be approved to receive funding for grant number two. Build Kansas, through the process, cost matching for the non-federal share is calculated as a percentage of the federal funds only and not the total project cost. So the KCC would be required to provide a 15% match of any grant we receive from the federal government. We've provided three, we're going to provide three areas that we were going to supply these two grants in. Area number one is underground replacement. The estimated cost is $1,075,038.94. The second one is the Southwest overhead rebuild cost of approximately $312,000. And then the third one is the Southeast overhead underground rebuild cost, which is approximately $284,000. And I believe there's a map attached to that. And here in the last couple of months, we also did a electric master plan that showed some areas that needed improvement. These areas were identified in their plan, so it makes sense that we would turn around and use those for this grant application. So alternatives is that the governing body may authorize staff to submit these applications to the bipartisan infrastructure law section and the Build Kansas Matching Grant Fund for each of the three projects, three areas that we've identified, or the governing body may choose to tell us not to apply for any grants. We recommend that you would authorize staff to submit the grants. There, nothing ventured, nothing gained. We may not get it. It's a very highly competitive area for these dollars, so we'd be very fortunate to receive it, but it would be a good thing if we did. There'd be no, there's no impact, no financial impact to the city to submit these grants, other than staff time to put them together. And both Kent Potorff and Casey Quintana have been working very hard getting everything ready to go in hopes that you would approve these, the staff to supply for these grants. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So these projects, if, so you're applying for the fully funded project, or they'd be able to, because of that match, be able to be fully funded? So there wouldn't be anything out of your budget? Is that what you're hoping for?
Yeah, if they were, if the federal government approves it, yeah, then the KCC would match that.
These are, these are really great opportunities. And that we qualify, that's, I think it's awesome.
Mayor, I make the motion that we authorize staff to submit the applications to the bipartisan infrastructure law section 4010D and the Build Kansas Matching Grant Fund for each of the three projects as presented.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and authorize staff to enter into a 13-month lease agreement with Premier Truck Sales and Rental, Inc. to lease a front-load solid waste disposal truck in the amount of $117,800. Mike?
Yes. As you know, or may not know, the city of Garden City has two front-load solid waste disposal trucks that collect trash from approximately 1,004 commercial accounts. Not all of those commercial accounts are front-load. Some are side-load. There's about 60 of them that are front-load, so there's quite a few out there. Anyway, both of these trucks are broken down in the last three weeks. Unit 111 is a 2012-year model and unit number 112 is a 2016-year model. One of them has some major engine issues that's being repaired here in Garden City. The other one has some major electronic control issues. Like any new piece of equipment, you know, there's a computer box that controls everything. It completely failed. And so the factory's trying to tell us what we need to do to be able to get that working. The one that's in town getting worked on, we're hoping to have some information next week on what it's going to cost and if it can be put back into service. In the meantime, we were fortunate to have North End Disposal send a truck, a driver from Salina, Kansas, to cover these routes starting on November 11th and which continue through today. However, this is not a long-term solution as the truck and driver can be called back at any time. They've been very helpful with this. Tyler Patterson and I took them to lunch today and it was really nice. They're more than happy to help any way they can. But there is that risk that should they need that truck and driver somewhere else, it'll get called away. So staff did some research. Premier Truck Sales and Rentals from Cleveland, Ohio has a 2023 front-load truck. Premier Truck Sales and Rentals from Cleveland, Ohio, has a 2023 front-load truck available to lease on a 13 month-to-month or 13-month basis. The 13-month program would be the most economical in the long run versus a month-to-month lease. Plus, at the end of the 13-month period, we'd need to return it, lease another truck, or lease the same truck for another 13 months, or actually purchase that truck, with 25% of our leasing expenses go towards the payment of that, the purchase of that truck. Typically, should you approve that today, we could have that front-load truck here next week. More than likely, it takes three or four days. The two trucks that are out are being evaluated as to what it's going to cost to get them fixed and back into service, but either way, we're, we need something to continue to provide the service we provide. So your alternatives are the governing body may approve the lease agreement with Premier Truck Sales and Rental to lease this truck for 13 months for a cost of $117,800, or you may choose not to approve the lease agreement. Staff recommends you approve alternative one and allow staff to enter into that lease agreement with Premier Truck Sales and Rental. The funding for this lease will come from the solid waste budget. It's not a unb, this is an unbudgeted expense in the solid waste fund, as there's not an anticipation for vehicles breaking down, and the need for this lease is a temporary solution. The cost of the lease will be covered by available cash balance of the fund when that time comes. And just as a follow-up, should you approve this today, and we do lease that truck over the next 13 months, the next three to four weeks, we will really evaluate the current trucks and whether or not we just need to come back and ask the governing body for permission to bid a new truck and head down that process, so. But today is just permission to lease a truck. Happy to answer any questions.
What's highly anticipated for that, Mike, as far as getting that truck back and making, I mean, say it works well, we're enough to keep it versus, you know, we, we just lease this for three months, you know, to get that fixed and then reused, or just go back with getting the bid for a new truck?
You know, we need to really
Yeah.
Do a full evaluation of the two trucks, but I, I think staff would agree, one of them trucks is probably going to not be.
Okay.
Like, you're not going to want to spend the money, it's going to cost half of the repair, so we would probably keep this truck for 13 months, then during that timeframe, figure out if we buy another one or. But if, say, that did come back and we could put both trucks back into service, we could terminate the lease early, and I'm sure there's a early clause, I think it's $3,600 if we cancel the delivery.
Yeah. I just didn't want, it was just a few that I needed to replace. It sounds not. Well, and I appreciate you having that, a good enough relationship with, you know, North End, that you can actually request, and that they, that's, that's very impressive. Lunch is very, that's a really great opportunity to build that relationship, so.
Yeah, both Tyler and Andy have really argued with those guys. They've done a great job of creating that relationship, so.
I know, you know, you talk about looking at bidding to purchase a truck, but later on in our agenda, we've got, we're looking at another truck that's like almost two years out is the thing. So is it possible if both of those trucks are not, cannot be put back into service, is that another possibility of coming up with another lease to help move that forward?
Yes, in this particular case, we could turn right around, lease this truck again.
Sure.
I believe, Commissioner, our intent is to come back, our intent is to come back here in a few weeks and be able to tell you, this is how long it's going to take to order a new truck, and if it's two years out, then that would change the dynamics of this probably.
Well, I just, I mean, looking ahead, there, we've got another item on here, and that's like two years out to get this next truck.
Those are electric trucks, and they're a little bit farther out. This is still probably 18 months.
That's what I'm thinking, you know, so.
But the nice thing is you blocked it down, you blocked it down with this lease. Well, I move that we approve the lease agreement with Premier Truck Sales and Rental Incorporated to lease for 13 months a front-load solid waste disposal truck for $117,800.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and from all of us, we wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
Item 12G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for proposal for one 2024 mobile command vehicle for use by the Garden City Police Department.
Cory? Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioners. Fannie County Emergency Management's Mobile Command Trailer is over 25 years old. This is the trailer that is used to respond to large-scale events and has been well utilized over the years, but does not meet the changing needs of our first responders, most notably a space for dispatching and a mobile communication center. In September 2022, the Garden City, Garden City secured a $500,000 technology and equipment grant from the Community Oriented Policing Services, or COPS, office for a, quote, "mobile command center vehicle equipped with shelving, mounts, conference area, laptops, motorola radios, software, wireless internet capabilities, and other necessary communication technologies to be fully operational," end quote. In the 2024 adopted budget, there was $550,000 in the general fund removed for the mobile command vehicle. However, after staff reached out to the representatives of the COPS grant, they were notified that if the funds were not spent on a mobile command vehicle, the city would have to return the award notification, or award allocation, excuse me. The funds must be spent by mid-2024. As a result, staff have created a list of specifications of the mobile command vehicle to reduce the anticipated price, along with utilizing funds from the Enhanced Wireless E911 budget to help reduce the cost to the general fund. The requested mobile command vehicle would be purchased using the awarded grants, funds, along with $250,000 in the Enhanced Wireless E911 funds from the state of Kansas and $250,000 from the general fund. The vehicle requested is a self-propelled 41-and-a-half-foot mobile communication center that could rapidly deploy to provide emergency responders with both space for an onsite incident command and onsite dispatching capabilities. This vehicle would give responders a dedicated space on location to more effectively perform their duties during complex emergencies or planned events such as parades, Beef Empire Days, and other community, large community events. These events typically require resources from a multitude of agencies, both within and outside of the city's organization. This vehicle will be provide, will provide a centralized location to serve as a coordination hub for these events. The city is growing both in size and population, which inevitably increases the likelihood and impact of future complex events, both natural and man-made in origin. How the city responds to those incidents would be positively impacted by this vehicle by allowing our leaders to more effectively coordinate and manage our resources, as well as provide a reliable backup to critical emergency response infrastructure. Alternatives that we propose are the governing body can, may approve the request for proposal for the mobile command vehicle. The governing body may deny the request for proposal for the mobile command vehicle, and the governing body may provide an alternative direction. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the request for proposal for the mobile command vehicle. Fiscal note is funding for the mobile command vehicle will come from E911 funds and $250,000 from there. The COPS grant with $500,000, and the general fund for $250,000. It is anticipated that the cost for the vehicle would not be realized until delivery, likely coming in 2026, unless a prepaid discount were to be available. In that instance, the city would anticipate paying for the vehicle in early 2024 to realize the savings of the prepaid discount. The city would incorporate the cost impact on the general fund in the revised 2024 budget. If payment will not be completed until delivery, funds will be budgeted in the 2024 revised budget and held over in the capital improvement reserve until such time as payment is due. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Good job, by the way.
Yeah.
Yes, very nice job.
So, so with this mobile command unit, so is it, will it be in the, so as far as who authorizes the use of it, is it both the police and the fire department, or is it, how's that work, or is the sheriff, the sheriff and the EMS, are they also included?
So that's a great question. It's going to be one of those vehicles that we're going to share. The command trailer that we have now is, is a shared asset. We have to go through emergency manage, management to get it deployed. This is going to kind of be the same thing. So any, anytime we have a big event in Fannie County, and honestly, in southwest Kansas, this, this will be available for first responders.
Congratulations on that. I mean, a $500,000 grant is, that's a lot of money. Returning that, that's what's really, I just cannot imagine that. I just, yeah.
I make the motion, we approve the request for proposal for the mobile command vehicle.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the Community Health Advisory Board. Danielle?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. The Community Health Advisory Board, or CHAB, is made up of nine members appointed by the governing body. That board is charged with advising you all on policy matters and programs as they relate to community health and the physical environment. There are currently five terms that expire on December 31st of this year, and there is one vacancy on the board due to absences. So the board receives seven applications for consideration, in addition to having three current members indicate interest and being reappointed to serve another term. The three members interested in being reappointed to another term include Callie Dyer, Lisa Southern, and Michael Gonzalez. It should be noted that Lisa Southern has exceeded the two-year term limit and would need a waiver to continue to serve on that board. The Community Health Advisory Board met on November 14th and recommends appointing Callie Dyer, Lisa Southern, and Michael Gonzalez to a three-year term, appointing Diane Elliott and Deanne Rupp to a two-year term, and appointing Isaac Acosta to a one-year term, to prevent the possibility of a majority of the board turning over again in one particular year. So this would have a three-year rotation as initially intended instead of kind of this wonky area that we're in right now. The seven new applications that the board received are included as attachments for you all to consider, and there are two alternatives before you. The first alternative is to appoint Callie Dyer, Lisa Southern, and Michael Gonzalez to a three-year term, appoint, appoint Diane Elliott and Deanne Rupp to a two-year term, and appoint Isaac Acosta to a one-year term to the Community Health Advisory Board. You also may appoint any of the other applicants to that board as well. The Community Health Advisory Board recommends alternative one, and there is no fiscal impact.
Well, I, I really appreciate that there are a lot of people who are wanting to do things in the city, and there are some specifics, so the thing I like about having lots of opportunities, but if you never get chosen to serve, and I think some of these people like Lisa, since she'd have to have a waiver to serve again, I think that might be an opportunity or an opening for someone who especially would like to serve on, on one of these boards rather than reappointing someone who's been there. Not, not that Lisa's, she is an incredible resource, and, you know, no matter what she does, it's really valuable. But I think sometimes when we apply, appoint the same people, especially when you have to waive, you know, for them to serve, I think that's where I'd like to see us maybe make a change that way. Maybe appoint someone who is, who's not had an opportunity to, to serve. And I do have a recommendation, but.
Well, you have the ability to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, you can, you can.
That's right, that's right. Okay. Well, I move that we, we reappoint Callie Dyer, Michael Gonzalez, and Diane Elliott to a three-year term, appoint Jeannie Rupp and Isaac Acosta to a two-year term, and do, appoint Velia Rodriguez to a one-year term on the Community Health Advisory Board.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Aye. Nay. Wrong word. Okay. Motion did not approve. Motion did not pass.
Make a motion, appoint Callie Dyer, Lisa Southern, and Michael Gonzalez to a three-year term, appoint Diane Elliott and Deanne, Jeanne Rupp to a two-year term, and then Isaac Acosta to a one-year term to Community Health Advisory Board.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item I is the consent agenda. If you'd like to pull one of those items off and talk about them separately, we can. If not, the appropriate motion would be I 1 through 5.
I make the motion to approve consent agenda items I 1 through 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Takes care of the business items, Mayor. I think we're ready for Commissioner reports.
All right, Commissioner.
All right. Great pre-meeting. Thanks to Dante for the downtown development fund work and getting all that going. That's going to be a pretty good tool for those folks involved, and then also John with the NRP program and modernizing that and, and kind of taking away some of the barriers that I think kind of prevented some of that, those programs being used with that cap, especially because of how that was. So great pre-meeting. Went to the Southwest Kansas Coalition, down in Liberal. I think we all, we all were there, so that was, that was good. Oh, no, yeah. Commissioner Hunter wasn't there, but the rest were good.
Further so.
For the.
Yeah. Wait a second.
So it's good, it's good always to work with Dodge City and then meet the city manager for Liberal. We got some good work done. I think we have a good policy that came out of that, and good to see that our communities continue to work together. Was able to go to the Governor's Water Conference in Manhattan last week. Interesting to hear the talk that goes around with all that. We do have a local celebrity in Fred Jones, so that was always interesting to see that go. And then I remember, like Connie said, with Match Day, it's a lot of our organizations, their biggest fundraising day of the year, so if you have the ability to donate, you can, like they said, the portal's open now to donate, but keep those people in mind and those organizations in mind, November 28th, if you can. And then finally, happy Thanksgiving to you all.
All right, Commissioner.
So I just want to echo Match Day. I think now their communications, that this year has been tremendous, now second only to the city of Garden City, so I really appreciate our communications department, and you can even get texts, I was down in Brazil for a mission trip, you can even get texts of things going on down in Brazil, but that was really neat. I also want to, I just say thank you also to, you know, I actually had the opportunity to go to Brazil for a mission trip to Manaus, and, you know, you don't appreciate the things until you don't have it, or you do have it, how good you have it, until you're there. We saw electrical wires are, what your staff does is incredible. I mean, there was some, I would not carry anything upright that was metal because it was scary. And if you have leftover wire, they just wrap it on a pole and it's just left there. So I never realized how fortunate we were. Plumbing, Americans, we tend to flush things down the toilet, you don't do that in foreign countries, so we had to have someone actually fashion a, a planter out of a pop bottle. So just so, because they don't have those kind of things, they just don't do that kind of stuff, so. And like I said, so it's one of those things that we take for granted. I really want to just say thank you just for all of the hard work that our city staff does, and excited about the direction that it's moving in. I know that, I mean, this is a really a neat time of the year, and I know there's lots of people in need, not only, we have so much to be thankful for, and so I want to remind us all not only to be grateful, but also there are the people around us, surrounding us, who sometimes it just might be an invite to dinner, or it might be, you know, hey, can I help you do something really simple? But again, this is just a time to really be thankful for all, not only what we have, but also help those who don't have something, also to give them something to be thankful for, so. I'm excited about the holiday and some kids coming home, so that will be exciting. That's all I have.
Commissioner Sessna?
I did it too, attended the Southwest Kansas Coalition, very good meeting, got a lot of good work done. It's great to collaborate with our other communities and just to visit with them and just kind of speak as one voice, and that really helps us with our legislative leaders in Topeka. Also attended the Southwest Kansas Chamber Dinner and visited with legislators there. It was a good pre-meeting this morning, a lot of good discussion on how we continue to move the community forward on our different programs that we have, to move our community forward. I'd like to thank the street department and their enhanced enhancements that they've done in the lighting around the community. It's really brightened up a lot of areas, so thank you for that. Want to thank the voters in the community for their support and their trust and their continued support of me and leading the community forward in last week's election, and I just want to thank everybody and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, thanks. I did also attend the Southwest Kansas Chamber Dinner, Chamber Breakfast, Southwest Kansas Coalition. So it was a busy, it was a pretty busy month, but yeah, a lot of eating, and I look forward to the chili heat coming up here in December, so. to the chili heat coming up here in December. That, you may, or the historical society and a chili dinner, that's, that's, yeah, homemade chili heat. It's awesome, so look forward to that. I just want to bring up the, the pre-meeting, great, thanks for any neighborhood development for, for doing that, for all the hard work, looking at all those codes and, and going through those changes. So I think it, like Commissioner Dick said, it does benefit some of those community members out there looking to revitalize their, their homes, and that dollar will, will help them get that done, so. Also like to just mention the partnerships that we have with, with our Southwest Kansas communities, Liberal, Scott City, Dodge, Hays even is kind of considered in our southwest region, which you wouldn't think, but, but they're also our one voice, so our one voice really matters here in southwest Kansas, so. One thing that I would really love to see is just that partnership grow and, and become stronger. The utilization of our professionals here in southwest Kansas is out there, so if you don't think that you can't find it here in southwest Kansas, you're not looking hard enough, so utilize our neighbors, whether it's professional services or languages or anything that you need help with, don't go to the internet, go, go to your communities and, and just talk. People are out there, they're, they're willing to help you, and so those bonds are important for us and for them as well, so. With that, the holidays are here, I really would like to stress the fact also that shop local, shop local, shop local, support our groups here, support our stores, just, you know, this is one thing that we'd like to just keep in, a strong community is, is to support our, not only our small businesses, but our large businesses too. So like I said, before you go to the internet, shop the stores, shop local. And then my last thing is, with it getting colder, I know like people are starting to turn their heaters on, I did bring show and tell, so my low smoke alarm here, I did have to change the batteries, so you, you must, you know, look at, look at your batteries, put a date on the backside of those, change them at least every three years, or if not sooner, but a lot of people start to use space heaters and things like that, so just be cautious not to run those during the night, all night, unintended, so. But if you do use the right power cords and things like that and such, so the fire department is always open for you to call and ask questions, and, and so if, like I said, utilize your professionals, ask questions, get the right answers, so I think that's all. Thank you.
Sometimes I test the smoke alarms, my smoke detectors more than once a year, so, you know, this, this week might actually be another test, but.
When you're cooking turkey, huh?
Yeah, right, yeah, look out, look out. Yes, ditto what the other commissioners said, being able to attend those events is so important for building those relationships and the camaraderie, and just having the opportunity to bounce ideas off, but to really get together and discuss things. I think that's important as well, to, you know, build that relationship and just make sure that we're all working in the same direction. We have a lot of projects where we do need to have working relationships with not just other people outside of our community, but even within our community as well, so making sure that we work together to all kind of pull in that same direction as well. Had an opportunity to go to Charles Stone's and read the proclamation for the Education Association Week, and that was a lot of fun. My, my great nephew attends school there, and all of his classmates at one point or another came up and, and asked if I was related to him, so I thought that was kind of fun. And then they declared themselves to be honorary nephews, because then at Real Men, Real Leaders, I spoke that next day to Real Men, Real Leaders, and I had more nephews that came up to me that day. So it was really quite fun to be able to do that and just talk to them about just a lot of things going on in the city, getting their input. It's always fun when you talk to students and find out what it is that they want to see in their community, and just to be able to ask them those questions, and just to see how, you know, what their input is, or whether or not they had, you know, go to the skate park, or whether or not they, you know, participate in sports, or what they like to do, and so it's just a great opportunity to be able to do that. The Crystal Apple was also an, an opportunity to be able to recognize our teachers, and so congratulations to the teachers who won their awards. It really is a testament, it was a, it was a really nice evening. There were a lot of educators there, Dr. Watson, the Secretary of Education was also there, and so it's just an important time to recognize education in our community. And on that note, yes, happy Thanksgiving, safe travels to all who are traveling, but it's also an opportunity, if you have the ability to set an extra place or two at your table, and you know of somebody who isn't celebrating Thanksgiving with somebody, maybe they're elderly, maybe they're homebound, reach out, and in the season of Thanksgiving, and offer a seat at your table, because that's really how we build community, so. On that note, have a happy Thanksgiving, and this meeting is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. Is that, is that, yeah, is that a replacement?
If you want to get a good kick out of something, you should Google the song Gobble Gobble.